Thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, City Council Meeting for Tuolleton. Tonight, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jesse Thompson, a veteran from the Army. So please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring May twelfth to eighteenth as National Prevention Week, and I believe the LEAP euthilize has wanted to come up and speak. Is that correct?
Hi, I'm Olivia Burke, and I am the President of LEAP.
And I'm Bergen Lee, and I'm the Vice President of LEAP.
All right, so before we talk about Prevention Week, we just wanted to tell you about National Fentanyl Awareness Day, which we did last week. Yes, and we all have our shirts. But so last week, it was National Fentanyl Awareness Day, and to talk about that, we held a lunch meeting for the kids at our school where we talked about the harms of fentanyl, and we talked about what to do if they were ever in a situation if they thought that someone was overdosing. So we gave them instructions and like how to tell the emergency services and things like that, and what to do if like to help someone best they can. And then we offered Narcan to the people there, which Cindy has.
So for Prevention Week, we have like three activities kind of planned out for our community, but also mostly the people in our school. So tomorrow morning, we're doing an Art Rock Cafe. So if you were outside, you might notice we had a little booth set up where we were allowing you guys to paint rocks. The kind of the plan is to do that again. We'll have coffee, tea, and donuts. It's just kind of like a relaxing atmosphere for kids who might have an IB Tesla that day if they wanted to come in and just kind of relax, or they're just stressed out about school. Kind of just gives them an opportunity to relax and do something fun.
And then, so that's on Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, during both lunches, we're going to hold a pop-up for the students where we're going to have these like little posters that say, "What's your why?", and we're going to be asking people what's their why of staying substance-free. And then they'll write them on the papers, and we're going to take their pictures if they, people allow us to, and we're going to put it on like a big collage wall on the wall of the school to show that like all these people who have these reasons why they're staying drug-free.
And then kind of the end of our week, we're doing a thing called a Coffee House, which is more of just an open-mic night, but it's later nights, seven PM to eight-thirty PM. But the idea is students could come up with like an instrument, maybe some jokes, or if they want to tell a story, and it's kind of like a fun night to kind of build community and give you something to do on a Thursday evening.
And all of this is also to promote our protective factors in our community, and doing, choosing to do things instead of using drugs, and so that people feel like they have somewhere they can belong to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, don't go anywhere. Counselor Hillier is going to read a proclamation that we're going to give to you, but I just want to know really quickly if a person, if you're in the public and you think, you see a person that's overdosing on fentanyl, what's the most important thing to do?
Call 911 first.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and then afterwards, you should ask them what like they would recommend in this situation. But for the most part, you just, you want to like check for their breathing, and if like you get the go-ahead from emergency services, then, and you have Narcan on you, then, and they're breathing, then that's okay to use it because it, for example, if like, because even if they're not overdosing, you don't know, it would take a lot of Narcan to cause any harm to someone who's not actually overdosing, so it can only really help someone if they were. And then you want to put them in the recovery position afterwards, so they can't, so they don't, if they throw up, they won't choke on it. And you want to just explain to them that they're overdosing after, and, and that like the emergency services are coming because it's like they're, all the drugs will be out of the system, which is very, you know, alarming, and it's hard.
Right. Those are great tips. So Counselor Hillier, would you like to read the proclamation declaring National Prevention Week?
Thank you. Counsel President, Mayor Pratt. Proclamation declaring, excuse me, proclamation, May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Prevention Week in the city of Tuolleton. Whereas substance misuse and mental health problems affect all communities nationwide, according to the twenty twenty-one National Survey on Drug Use and Health, an estimated sixty-one point two million Americans aged twelve and older use illicit drugs in the past year. Nearly six million young people aged twelve to twenty reported drinking alcohol in the past month. Twenty-two percent of Americans, which is seventy-four million people aged twelve and older, used tobacco products or used e-cigarette or other vaping devices to vape nicotine in the past month. Additionally, in twenty twenty-one, eight point seven million Americans missed use prescription pain relievers. Whereas with commitment and support, these and other substance use and mental health issues can be prevented. The focus of National Prevention Week is to change the prevention landscape by providing evidence-based and accessible resources to facilitate collective action and story sharing. By showcasing the work of our partners in prevention, we can confront the societal challenges surrounding substance misuse together while celebrating stories of prevention. Whereas this is a message we need to spread far and wide. An estimated twenty-nine point five million people ages twelve and older in America were classified as having alcohol misuse disorder in the past year, and about fifty-seven point eight million adults had a mental health, mental illness. The impact of mental and substance misuse disorders is apparent in our local community. An estimated five thousand fifty-eight people in Tuolleton, Oregon, are affected by these conditions. We have the power to change these numbers and, more importantly, change lives. Whereas through National Prevention Week, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. Equally important, community members from all walks of life learn they can, what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow by helping to prevent these problems. Being a shoulder for someone to lean on, leading someone to get help for a mental health or substance use issue before it worsens. Setting an example by staying substance-free, and other actions like this all play a role in keeping the people around us and ourselves healthy and safe, including what happens in our community around substances being sold. Whereas we and others across the United States need to recognize the seriousness of substance use and mental health issues in our communities, the power of prevention, and the tireless effort of those working to make a difference. The small, daily actions done by individuals combined with the actions of families, communities, and coalitions come together to make up the larger, bold movement of prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Tuolleton hereby proclaims May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be National Prevention Week, and call upon our community to join with us this week in celebrating the compelling programs and events that support increasing awareness of and action around mental health and/or substance use disorder year-round. Introduced and adopted this twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty-four, city of Tuolleton, Oregon.
Who gets this? LEAP, would you mind coming up? Yeah. Okay. Here's an official proclamation for you, signed by the mayor and our city manager. Cheryl. Thank you. Next, I think Chief Pickering's up with a new employee introduction.
Well, good evening, Council President Pratt and council. I am pleased to introduce our newest police officer, Hunter Davis. Hunter came to us from the city of Oregon City, where he worked in the Public Works Department. He recently attended Oregon State University, working towards a degree in business. Hunter's an avid outdoorsman and an avid sports guy, but I think the biggest thing with Hunter is he's a third-generation police officer. So his grandfather was a Clackamas County deputy, and his dad is currently the Chief of Police of the Oregon City Police Department. So we're very excited for Hunter to start with us. He started on April twenty-ninth. He will start the police academy on May twenty-seventh, so he's a quick turnaround. He's in his orientation right now, and so we'll get him back later in the fall and get him into his field training. So we just wanted to bring Hunter and introduce him to the council.
When did you start, Hunter?
April twenty-ninth.
And how's your experience been so far?
It's been great so far.
Well, that's good.
Loving it.
Didn't want to work with your dad?
What?
Didn't want to work with your dad?
No.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm excited to work hard every day and serve the community of Tuolleton.
That's great. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next is public comment. Do we have anybody in chat? Okay, I have, I have a slip from Jesse Thom, Jesse Thompson. Yes, come on up. Let us know who you are.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jesse Thompson. Really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all today. I am a member of Tuolleton VFW Post Three, Four, Five, Two, and I'm here today on behalf of the VFW to invite everyone to the twenty twenty-four Memorial Day Observance. This event is scheduled for Memorial Day, which is Monday, May twenty-seventh, at ten forty-five AM at the Tuolleton Lake of the Commons. We'll be on the west side of the lake. This year's event includes some of the great pieces from past year's events, including the Missing Man Flyover by the West Coast Ravens, singing by our own Tuolleton High School Crimson Heirs, and remarks by our own mayor, Mayor Frank Boobinack. Returning this year, and back by popular demand, will be the Float by the Portland Model Power Boat Association. They will be back out on the water with several of their watercrafts, some of them are replicas of battleships between six and eight feet long. So they will be out there on that lake. It's something that they really enjoy doing. This year's featured speaker lineup includes representatives from the office of Congresswoman Andrea Salinas and Senator Ron Wyden. Now, along with those two individuals, we will also get remarks from another featured speaker. His name is Lieutenant Colonel Matthew Krempel, and he's an active-duty United States Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel. He's been deployed multiple times, and he is a Purple Heart recipient. Following the observance, just as in past years, will be the VFW Auxiliary hosting the free community barbecue and picnic out at the Tuolleton Community Park. This barbecue and picnic, it's a stellar event. It's free to attend by anybody in the community, and it is all organized by the Tuolleton VFW Auxiliary. So we really encourage people to attend. We feel that this is a great way to recognize and reflect on the importance of Memorial Day and the sacrifices of others.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you for promoting that and for reminding us to be grateful for those who have given their lives.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will be enacted in one vote. I'll ask the counselors if there's anyone who wishes to remove an item for the consent agenda at this time. Then I will go through them. We have five items tonight. First is consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Second, consideration of resolution number five-seven-seven-zero-dash-twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services for the final design and construction phase of the Martinasi Sewer Trunk Line Upsizing Project. Three, consideration of resolution number five-seven-seven-one-dash-twenty-four, authorizing an amendment to the agreement between the city of Tuolleton and Tuolleton River Keepers for management and operations of city property. Four, consideration of resolution number five-seven-seven-two-dash-twenty-four, awarding a contract for government affairs and lobbying service, lobbying services, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. And finally, consideration of resolution number five-seven-seven-three-dash-twenty-four, increasing the construction contract authorization amount for the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Phase Two project. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we're on to special reports, and we have an outside agency grant awardee from Love Inc., and I understand that, oh, I can't find it. Ken Karen's up.
Just want to thank you for the opportunity to-
Could you let us know who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I said your name.
My name is Ken Karen. I am the interim executive director for Love in the Name of Christ for Tiger, Tuolleton, and Sherwood. I've had the privilege of working there for seven years, a little over seven years, and it's, it's a joy, not only for me to work there, but also to know that my own town is supporting this organization. I'm a resident of Tuolleton, lived here for twenty-two years. My children have gone through the school system here. I've volunteered in the Little League and just been a part of that board as well. And so for me, it's just a real honor to know that my own town is, is helping people like our clients and then some of the other organizations as well, meet the needs of people who are on the cusp. One of the things I want to share with you is about three of our clients tonight. One of them is a woman in her eighties. She lives in an assisted living center here in Tuolleton. Social Security pays for the majority of that and leaves her with very little each month. She had a need for what we call personal care in her life, and that's adult diapers, bedpads, wipes, things to help give her dignity. She reminded, well, I discovered that she's the same age as my mother, and it meant even more to me that we were able to come alongside her. At first, we didn't have the items, and we reached out to one of our church partners and say, "Hey, would you be willing to help in this area?" And they just, of course, and so it was just a privilege to be able to come alongside her. One of the other pieces that Love Inc. does is we, we hit the economic need that's the tip of the iceberg, but we know there's so much more below, below the waterline. And for this woman, she needs individuals to, to call her, to check on her, to see how she's doing, and have a sweet volunteer, one of thirty-one. We are volunteer-driven. I am the only employee, and the rest of them are what make Love Inc. go. If you're looking to honor a person in Tuol, in Tuolleton as a volunteer, just let me know. I have a woman who's been here for ten years and has lived through countless staff comings and goings, but her heart is to help people in need, but that's for another day. And so my volunteer, back in twenty, called this woman while she was stuck in California and just checked on her every week, bi-weekly. And it's, it's great to be a part of an organization that works to, to help in that capacity. We have another gentleman who, oh, sorry, who had a stroke and through a series of circumstances, needed some assistance. He needed not only the economic piece that I mentioned earlier, but there's so many things below that that he needed. He needed someone who to help walk alongside, walk alongside him as he was going through a divorce, walk alongside him as he was selling his home, help him move from that location here to Tuolleton, and when the rent became too high in that facility, to move to another space in, in town. And it's, again, a volunteer helping to do that, meeting the need, and it's with your assistance that we're able to do that and be able to match people together. And that's our desire to grow in, is to, to, when a person has a need, we work to meet that, but try and find individuals that can just hear them, listen to them, and help them. The last one I want to tell you about is a, a single mom of three. I've known her for a little over six years. Through a series of circumstances, she was homeless for a short period of time, ended up being able to find an apartment here in Tuolleton, and she called for what's called Essentials. The Essentials is deodorant, shampoo, toilet paper, paper towels, feminine products. And as she was placing that order, and because the relationship that I personally have been able to develop with her, I asked her how it was going. And at that moment, it's when the conversation completely turned. She opened up that she was battling breast cancer. They had just found a lump on her breast, and just the, the anxiety that came through her voice in that call was one that was very apparent. And I had just learned two weeks before that one of my volunteers had also battled breast cancer and was on the other side. And so when I have an opportunity in the middle of that call to say, "Hey, can I put you on hold for just a second?", and I asked my volunteer, "Would you be willing to talk to this woman?", and she said, "I got her." Not even hesitation, "I got her." So I connected the two, and their conversation lasted between ten to fifteen minutes. In the midst of that conversation, there were words of assurance, words of compassion, words of care that were exchanged. And when they hung up, I said, "Okay, so how'd it go?" "Ah, she's fine." She was an old retired, she's a retired school teacher, very matter-of-fact. I love the woman to, love the woman immensely. But she knew what she was, the, the client was going through and was able to help reassure her that where she was at medically, that the treatments that she was about to receive and walked her through what some of those were going to be, would be. We all know that different things can happen, but was a, looked like a very positive outcome. But the part of the exchange to me that spoke volumes was the fact that she said, "I got her." And that's a thing that we are working over and over again with our volunteers, is to have our clients, not only on the economic side, but on the personal side, to see the things below the waterline, to work to, to not, to have her, to have him, to have them. I just want to thank you for your support. Without you, we couldn't do what we do. I gladly answer any questions that you have, and when it comes time for the next cycle, if we are, my job's to be bold, and I'm learning that as I go in this capacity. I've only been my job since January, but if we qualify for, again, I would ask for you to consider us. We're here. We're a part of this community. Our volunteers are from this community. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Counselor Hillier?
Thank you for sharing that. I know we've dropped off over the years, like kids' games and clothes and different things, but could maybe you share with us, please, other high-priority needs that, that you have and where best we might be able to, or the community who's listening might be able to support that?
Yeah. Currently, we have a, Love Inc. was started by a partnership of churches seeing a need in the area, and one of our church partners helps in the area of diapers. And, and it's an area that we're looking to see how we can best support them. And so if someone feels so inclined to help with diapers, size six and pull-ups, those sizes are what are needed. The sizes below that, currently, there's a good supply, but six kids get to that level, camp there for way too long until they decide that they're done. And so, so that's one area. Also, in the Essentials that I mentioned before, since January, we have brought in more than half the clients that we brought in from last year as new clients. We met fifty-three different orders in the Essentials area, which completely stretched beyond what our normal capacity has been through our church partners. Different avenues were reached out and helped meet that need, but it's an area that is constant. Every, just about every client that comes in, and then, because we come alongside some for a little bit longer than just an immediate moment, but some for years, widows and orphans, single moms, that their situations just aren't changing right now. And if the, the council ever wants to be on the, the cusp of something, we have a broken system. We have a system that helps provide a lot of different things, but if you make one dollar too much, you lose it all. And we're, we are creating a society that is keeping people locked, and the longer, like I've been this for seven years, and I've seen it over and over again. So if you, if you ever want to be on the forefront and start a conversation that might be able to change something, I would love to, to be a part of that, because this is, we've got to change. We cannot keep doing what we're doing and expect something different. Sorry. Soapbox, I apologize.
Counselor Brooks?
Thank you for your presentation. I was curious about, I will say too, that I agree with what you said, and I've seen it change over the years. There used to be a different kind of safety net than there is today, and, and when I was working in the field of social work, I saw our expectations change of what services and safety nets were available to people. So I appreciate the conversation. I was curious, how many people, or how many clients do you have? Do you serve a year?
We serve, last year, overall, Love Inc., through our three different communities, met over two thousand different needs. The in-kind value between product and the volunteer services was a value of about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for Tuolleton alone. That number in twenty-three was forty-one thousand this year, and we're not done with what would be your grant cycle is around a thirty, almost thirty-six dollar value. We just completed a, a grant aspect with our clients in the area of utilities. We had a church partner in Steve the Wood Guys, we like to call him, who cuts wood. He's in his seventies, cuts wood and uses that, and also sells it, so that we're able to help heat people's homes. We were able to help, it's a small number, about twenty different clients of about five thousand dollars, a percentage which was Tuolleton. I don't have those exact numbers. We're still trying to wrap up that, that paperwork.
And if, oh, and also, so you know, we, as a city, have new programming for people in need around utilities, so it'd be good for people to know that.
Yes.
And if somebody was looking for services, do they have to qualify? Do they go to a certain place? How does one find you?
Currently, we don't advertise because of the, the volume size that we, our infrastructure can handle, but individual will call in, we walk through a reception intake process. We hear their story. We walk through their, their budget. We ask them for individuals that can just confirm what's going on in, in their life. And when that's done, we then call the client back, and we triage what is their greatest need and walk through that. If there are programs that we have in place, we match those with those. If there are ones that are outside of that, like some of the things I had already mentioned, we will brainstorm with them. We will reach out to a, a partner and say, "Hey, can you help in this area?" So that's, that's really what we, we try and do. And we, anybody who has a need, regardless of, sorry, long day, of, of gender, regardless of ethnicity, we help. They're God's creation, and we love them, and we want to do everything that we can to support them in where they are.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? So I just, my question for you is like, you spoke to that, there is our system is kind of a mess where people make one dollar too much and they're kicked out. There's no kind of graduating thing. So do you help people in that realm that get just past that next dollar?
We do. We do. We've, literally, we take where they are and work with them. We do try and encourage them to continue to move past it and to keep looking for the, the different jobs, help them with the skills. When they're getting training, we work to help them in the areas that we can. We're always looking for partners that can support individuals in different capacities so that they have the ability to move forward and not just stay where they are.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for sharing what your organization does and-
My pleasure.
Not only taking care of physical needs, but the social interactions that are so important for everyone, and reminding us all of how wonderful it is that we live in a community with so many great volunteers.
It's a, as I said, it's a, a city that I am proud to be a part of and look forward to seeing what is going to go on in the future. Like I said, I'm new to my position, and there are lots of things that are going on, and I would love to chat with any and all of you about different ways and different opportunities that Love Inc. can partner further with the city of Tuolleton to be able to further expand how we help the citizens of Tuolleton that are in need. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have summer program preview, and I'm guessing that's Julie. And?
Ooh, I think we're sitting on different sides of the table. Ooh, I think we're sitting on different sides of the table.
We're mixing it up.
We're mixing it up.
Well, good evening, Council President Pratt and members of the council. I am Julie Ludeman. I'm Recreation Manager.
I'm Sarah Jessedos, and I'm Public Services Manager at the library.
And we're here to tell you about all the great things that'll be happening this summer. So without further ado, this is a new remote, so.
We'll see what happens.
There we go.
Oh, no, too much, too much. That, that's the theme of the summer, actually.
Oh, no, too much.
Too much.
Okay. I'm not touching anything. Well, very, very exciting. So we do have, hopefully, you're all on your toes now. So the Blender Dash is coming up this Saturday, June 8th, in Community Park. This is the kids' fun run that includes Mud, Color, Foam, Obstacles, and Zombies. If you'd like to be part of the craziness, we are always looking for volunteers. In fact, I think Council President Pratt will be at the Volunteer Check-In Tent. So we're always looking for more volunteers. It's a lot of fun. We're anticipating about 800 to 1,000 kids. Right now, we have about 750 kids signed up, which is, I think, around 200 more than we were at last year at this time, and we hit our max of 1,000. So I, it's gonna be, it'll be crazy. It'll be epic. Lots and lots of fun, and that's kind of our big kickoff for summer recreation programs. I'll let you hit, I'll let you press the button.
Just say next.
Next.
Okay. So the library has its own kickoff the following weekend. Summer Reading as a program starts June 1st, but we wait till the kids are out of school, and we have our kickoff weekend. We're going to be open for fun on Friday, the 14th, June 14th. We have a band called Jessa and the Saplings coming. The theme, Summer Reading always has a theme, and this year, it's Read, Renew, Repeat. We're taking it as a broad ecological theme, and Jessa and the Saplings do have a lot of songs about that, but they're also secretly a Talking Heads cover band. So we're very, very excited about that. We have a photo booth coming. We have lots of stuff for teens as well, so we're really hoping to see a lot of people who got chased by zombies and maybe just want to have a slightly mellower foam-free time, maybe?
Relax.
Okay.
Listen to Talking Heads.
Yes. Then later that weekend, on the Sunday, we have Sean Gaskell coming back. He plays chora, which is that instrument over his arm. It's a lute from Ghana, and he has an amazing story of going and studying there and telling the tradition of that instrument. So we're really happy to, to meet with him again. Next. Yes. And then some of our other programs, we have our Maker in Residence, Rosalyn Cleo is a local artist who is going to do three workshops in July. She works with collage, and she's going to have memory collages, as we're calling them. People come in with a photocopy of a photograph, and she'll help them turn it into art that really reflects their experiences. We're really excited about that, and it'll be using a lot of recycled material as well.
Perfect. On, on theme.
Yes. Our sound baths are coming back, so if you need that moment of zen in your life, come check our calendar for those. And the Willamette Valley Chamber Music Festival will come back. I think we might be the only library with a resident chamber group. It's pretty great. They always bring in a composer. We've actually been the world premiere for site for pieces of music. It's, it's, it's pretty fun, and we're looking forward to seeing them again. Beep. Sorry.
All right. And continuing with our arts and culture theme, we have Viva Tuolotin, which will be returning to Tuolotin Community Park this year on Saturday, July 13th. It's gonna be even bigger and better, and we're very, very excited. There's a really great lineup. All of the performances and activities are free. There'll be more booths with artisans and great food and just lots and lots and lots to do. So that's Saturday, July 13th, from 1 until 8:00 p.m. in Community Park. Also looking for volunteers.
It went a little too fast. Let's try to get back. There we are. This is all about you.
The next few slides are a little bit about me. So Summer Camp is, again, happening in Community Park. We have two different, we have actually three different age groups. Grades one through six, we divide into two groups, the first through third graders and fourth through sixth graders. All the camps are eight weeks long. We've got 432 kids in the younger group, and then we have Team Camp, which is a little smaller. We have 12 kids per week, so we've got 914 signed up for that. Everything's full. We actually were able to get a priority for 12s and residents. They got a little two-hour head start. So we're really glad to have that happening again this year. And we're not looking for volunteers. We actually want to pay some people who, if you like teenagers and you are at least 20 years old, for our insurance purposes, and don't mind driving a 15-passenger van, we're still looking for staff to join our really, really incredible team for this summer. Looking forward to it. And concerts. So we have four Friday night concerts, two in July, two in August. On August 23rd, that's our big night, where we have two bands in Community Park. Lots of really, really good variety of music this summer. We also are bringing back the lunchtime concerts. I really encourage everyone to come and, and join those. They're at the splash pad side of the lake. We bring out some tables with umbrellas, and people can come and just enjoy some lunch from noon to 1:00 and listen to some great music. So encourage everyone to come on out and have a lunch break and relax for a little bit. And now I'll turn it over.
Okay. And you do hear the word volunteers coming up with us, but we, quite a bit, but we, we're fully staffed for our teen, summer teen and tween volunteer program. We have had about half of our teens and tweens are returning from previous years. Of course, new tweens and some new teens as well coming in. They support the library with our programs. Last year, we had a really fun display crew. They help out with general library needs, and we're, they're actually do interviews for these positions. They, we treat it a little bit like a job for them, so excited to have them. And then Blender Dash and Viva, of course, is an all-hands-on-deck kind of, kind of operation.
All hands, many, many hands. And you get a little dirty at Blender Dash, I have to.
And of course, we have volunteers throughout our parks. We have Team Tuolotin. It's a youth program, helping out in our parks with the physical maintenance of it, hug a park or a trail or a tree. Those are corporate group projects that get scheduled, kind of one-shot programs, also assisting in the parks. And our DIY volunteers who kind of self-schedule to pick up litter and keep, keep us looking And over at the police department, we have the Heroes Camp, and Julie very graciously wrote this out for me, because I was like, that sounds really cool. And it was not the acronym of the camps that, you know, were around when we grew up. But this is Helping Educate Responsible Outstanding Everyday Students. So that's a youth engagement program that they have. There's four one-week sessions, both learning and social opportunities for them. And then in August, it's National Night Out, the first Tuesday in August, though that's in cooperation, I believe, with some CIOs as well, out in the neighborhoods and really getting to know our residents in our neighborhoods. And other departments get involved with it as well, but it's very much driven by the police.
So we also have programs at the Wantita Poll Center, which is our center for active older adults. There are programs in the areas of wellness and longevity, trips and travel, and lifelong learning. And some of the highlights for this year are stand-up paddle boarding, Nordic walking, which is like walking with the sticks, right? You've probably seen that. Bat adventures in the park. I don't know if everyone knows that bats are very good pollinators. We like them. And there's also an overnight trip over to Eastern Oregon for caves, canoes, and meteors. So when they say active older adults, they really do mean it. There's a lot going on. There's, of course, also Meals on Wheels, congregate meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the center. There's a plethora of fitness classes and lots of ways just to come and, and enjoy and, and have some social time with friends. So also a wonderful resource for our community. And finally, we have some partners that provide programs that we just, we just can't. So we have Skyhawk Sports Camps. They'll be out in our parks, primarily Iback and Jurgens Park this summer, running sports camps for kids. We also have our Tuolotin Youth Sports Leagues that are very, very active in the summertime in our parks. Tuolotin Historical Society, of course, has lots of great programs. And Tuolotin Pickleball Club, if you've been to a pickleball court on a beautiful day, in fact, right before I came here, there were lots of people playing pickleball. So it keeps us all very busy, and we're just very grateful for the opportunity to be here and looking forward to another great summer, hopefully not too hot.
I think we got that out of the way this weekend.
So yeah, thank you all for your support, and I think that that might be the last slide that says, thank you. Yes. Thank you, once again, for all of your support for our recreation and library programs. These are the kinds of things that make a community a place that people really can call home. We have wonderful services by the city, by our nonprofit service providers, and, and that's what really makes Tuolotin a place that people want to stay and, and become a part of. And so thank you for, for making that a priority and for continuing to support what we do.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Brooks?
I just had a quick one. Thanks for all the work that you both do. It's an incredible amount of work, and, and I volunteered, and Blender Dash is really a blast, and I didn't get that dirty. You can do it. So just for clarification, for the evening concerts, are they all at Community Park this year?
Oh, thank you for the question. They are not all at Community Park. I would flip back, but I don't want to make anybody dizzy. Two of them are in Community Park, so July 12th and August 23rd are in Community Park. But we are rotating around to neighborhood parks as well. So July 26th will be at Tuolotin Park, and then on August 9th, we'll be over at the lake.
Great. Thank you so much.
And all that information is on our website.
This year, the Tuol, the, the Viva Tuolotin will be at Community Park, though. So that's a big change. Okay, thank you. The food is great there.
It is really good.
Any other questions or comments? I guess I'll ask my question. So for the bus drivers you need, do they need to have a CDL license?
No, it's actually 15-passenger vans, so you don't need a special license. They do have to go through a training here, but it's, it's really just like driving a giant banana.
Okay.
Is what I feel like.
Giant banana. And then, I guess, well, I'm just gonna throw out an idea, zombie counselors.
Ooh.
Anyway. And lastly, can you remind us, if people want to volunteer for these things, how they would do that?
Yes, exactly. TuolotinOregon.gov/volunteer.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you all. Have a great night.
All right. Under General Business, we have consideration of Ordinance Number 1485-24, City Initiated Updates to the Tuolotin Development Code. We, a public hearing was held at our April 22nd meeting, where there was a first and second reading. Because this wasn't unanimous, we're back here tonight for a third reading and vote. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a third reading of Ordinance Number 1485-24. Is it by title only?
By title only.
I'll second.
Okay. Oh, and all those in favor of the reading, third reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Hillier?
It's the reading.
I know.
Can I say aye?
All right, thank you. Ordinance Number 1485-24, An Ordinance Related to Land Use, Amending Tuolotin Development Code, Chapter 80. This is PTA 24-0001.
Okay, I'll make a motion for adoption of Ordinance Number 1485-24. City Initiated Updates to Tuolotin Development Code.
Second.
Kate, do I need to call each person?
Other than discussion, it doesn't have to be a roll call.
Okay. So, um.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Brooks?
Oh, do you have to, you have to ask for a discussion?
Oh, would anybody like to, sorry. Anyway, it's open for discussion. Would anybody like to make comments?
Okay. All right. Counselor Gonzalez?
I motion, yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Absolutely not, no.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
And I vote aye also. Motion is passed. All right. Next would be Items Removed from Consent Agenda, which we have none. And finally, we have Council Communications, so I'll go backwards this time, Counselor Hillier.
I don't have anything to report formally, other than the rules, the Council Rules Committee has met a couple different times, and so we meet again on Friday, and we'll have our report back.
Great. Counselor Reyes?
Nothing to report. That's part of the council business.
Counselor Gonzalez?
So I attended the, the Committee of Advisory Committee for the TSP for the Bicycle and Pedestrians. I was highly encouraged by the engagement that we had, but also worried, because we already have a transportation problem here in Tuolotin. And I understand this is a, a planning process, but they wanted to add bikes throughout our city, which is a wonderful idea. I just hope that we get aggressive and maybe build tunnels and things like that to add bicycles, because it's gonna be quite challenging with the limited space we have on our roads, and to consider bikes is quite challenging. But I'm part of the process, and hopefully that, that works out for all of us. The other item that's there to my heart is I attended the Tiger Tuolotin School District Superintendent Search Committee Engagement. And so I was able to keep, keep, give feedback to a lot of the things that the parents were asking about on who we select, that kind of criteria. So I wanted to go down a list of items to get on the record for our community that, that we hear you. So I'm on the Budget Committee for the Tiger District as well, our school district, and it's hugely painful to see what's happening with our school district. And let me just highlight what that looks like when a school has failed to listen to its parents. The school district has increased property taxes to its max-dollar amount, because enrollment is 1,100 less students in our school district. We cut beneficial programs for our students, which is very painful to do that when our kids have such a high need. We've laid off teachers, upwards of 60-plus teachers. We've had to dip into our reserves placed in our school district and financial risk just to be able to see these fundings through, through this painful process. Now, what does that look like? It means that parents are advocating for full transparency and communication between the school district and the parents regarding student activities and curriculum. We want to ensure that superintendent advises the school board to not infringe on parents' rights and disclose what is going on in the school districts. We stress the importance of restoring confidence in our school district once again and not how, and enforce policies and operations. We want to acknowledge the significant decrease in student enrollments, which is, it's terrible, because it's, it's $15,000 per child that is unenrolled from the public school system.
I'd like to ask for a point of order, please. What does this have to do with our public, our business for the city of Tuolotin?
I was asked to be part of the Selecting Committee on Hiring a Superintendent for our school district, which is our city.
Are you speaking on behalf of the city council at this event?
I was asked for my opinions, and I'm giving it to you. I'm giving it to the public.
Excuse me, excuse me. If, if you.
To address the chair.
So I am giving it to the.
Excuse me. If this is not something you were appointed to do by the city or is on behalf of the city, I don't think this is the appropriate.
I was invited as a councilperson to select and put the criteria.
We were all invited, but this is.
If you did not attend, that's okay. As, as a parent and as a councilperson, I wanted to hear my, that my constituents, that they are being heard. to hear my constituents, that they are being heard, and I wanted to go on the record on what my, my points were placed, on behalf of parents in our city. And that's what I'm doing.
All right, thank you. But at this point, I think we need to focus on what our city policies.
The, the school district is in our city.
The school district is in our city, but at this point.
Constituents of Tuolotin attend the school district, and many parents have been frustrated that the school district is not adhering to what they're supposed to be doing. So.
I guess I'm trying to understand.
Excuse me, excuse me. I would appreciate if you could let me speak, that this is, I understand, we've all been contacted, the schools are part of our system, but that is not what we are here to be setting policy on. You're welcome to your own opinion, and I understand, and we all have heard the concerns of the parents in our school district, and it's a very difficult situation. But at this point, I think we just need to stick to what is directly related to city business.
Thank you for that. I will, I will digress. I will close with this, that I prioritize to have a non-political person into our school district on the selection criteria. So I'll close with that. So thank you for that.
Counselor Brooks?
First of all, I, I'm sorry that I couldn't go to the state of the city, but I hope that it was a great time, and I say aloha. I had a great time, too. And, you know, one really good way, as far as when you're talking about sharing, if you're interested in anything that anyone has to say at a public meeting, please read through the minutes of the meeting, and then you can know what people shared. I appreciate you stepping in for the mayor today, and doing a little extra credit work. And as far as the PAB, the May meeting was canceled, the Water Consortium meeting did not meet, and then the Arts Advisory Committee, I don't think we met since last time I was here, but I am super excited about the new art at the Veterans Memorial, or the Veterans Plaza, which is gonna be super exciting. I also want to encourage everyone to go to the Memorial Day Celebration. It's gonna be great to have it in the commons, rather than at the cemetery. It's a great change, and it's just a, a step forward towards when we can do it, when the Veterans Plaza is fully open, and we're really excited about that. And thanks to everybody who came out tonight and took their time out of their evening to be a part of their government.
All right, I'll finish up with, I had two meetings. I had the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting. We had a presentation on the recent history of state funding for housing and industry investments, and we were reminded that it's really important, and the mayor said this before, to have a story and do your homework ahead of time, so you have something ready to go to sell why you need this money for your city. And then, along with Counselor Gonzalez, I went to the Transportation System Plan Committee meeting, and we focused on pedestrian and bike. There was, the talk about bike, a lot of it was about the fact that with e-bikes now, we're, that's a great way to transport to work, especially if you're local, and that we need to have systems in place to make it safe for everybody. That's it for tonight, so if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.